The children ' s float came to an abrupt halt in the middle of Main Street. Police sirens wailed through the crisp autumn air as two patrol cars blocked the parade route, their red and blue lights casting eerie shadows across the crowd of families lining the sidewalks. Seven- year- old Emma Martinez sat frozen in her decorated wheelchair, a tiara of paper flowers askew on her dark curls, watching in confusion as Officer Jenkins approached the float with an uncomfortable expression etched across his weathered face. Ma ' am, I am going to need you to step down from the float, Jenkins said to Emma ' s mother, Maria, who stood protectively behind her daughter ' s wheelchair. The officer ' s voice carried reluctantly through the suddenly quiet street. We ' ve received a complaint that this situation poses a safety hazard to the parade. Maria ' s hands tightened on the wheelchair handles, her knuckles white against the chrome. A safety hazard officer, Emma is the guest of honor. She ' s been looking forward to this for months. Her voice cracked slightly, the disbelief evident in every syllable. Behind them, the Willowbrook Elementary School marching band had stopped mid song, their instruments dangling at their sides as they strained to hear the conversation. The dragon float, adorned with tissue paper scales and glitter, sat motionless while its young occupants peered over the sides in confusion. Just thirty minutes earlier, Emma had been the picture of joy. Her cerebral palsy had never dimmed her radiant smile, and today she wore it like a beacon as she waved to the crowd from her special place of honor. The city council had unanimously voted to make her the parade ' s youngest grand marshal after her fundraising efforts had helped build the new accessible playground in Central Park. Her homemade sign reading Every Kid Deserves to Play had become a symbol of hope for the entire community. The Martinez family had arrived early that morning to decorate Emma ' s wheelchair with streamers and balloons. Tom Martinez, Emma ' s father, had spent weeks coordinating with the parade organizers to ensure every detail was perfect. The float ' s ramp had been installed specifically for Emma ' s wheelchair, and safety rails had been added to prevent any accidents. Everything had been planned meticulously, approved by the city, and celebrated by the community. But now, as the crowd began to murmur and shift restlessly, the festive atmosphere evaporated like morning mist. Parents lifted their children onto their shoulders to get a better view of the commotion. The marching band director, Mister Thompson, wiped sweat from his brow despite the cool October air, unsure whether to continue or abandon the performance entirely. From her position near the barricades, Karen Hendricks watched the scene unfold with grim satisfaction. Her perfectly coiffed blonde hair didn ' t move in the breeze, held in place by an industrial strength layer of hairspray. She clutched her phone with manicured fingers, the screen still displaying the nine one one call log from fifteen minutes earlier. Her voice had been calm and authoritative when she ' d reported the dangerous situation to the emergency dispatcher. Yes, this is Karen Hendricks from Maple Heights subdivision, she had said into the phone, her tone dripping with false concern. I am witnessing a serious safety violation at the city parade. There is a disabled child on one of the floats, and it ' s clearly unsafe for both her and the other participants. Someone needs to remove her immediately before there is an accident. The dispatcher had tried to gather more details, but Karen had been insistent. Look, I don ' t want to see anyone get hurt, but this is exactly the kind of liability issue that could shut down the entire parade. The city needs to act responsibly and remove this hazard before it ' s too late. Now, as Officer Jenkins reluctantly approached the float, Karen stood behind the crowd with her arms crossed, her expression a mask of righteous indignation. She ' d moved to Willowbrook six months ago from a larger city, bringing with her a collection of complaints about noise ordinances, property values, and what she termed inappropriate public displays. The neighbors had initially tried to welcome her with casseroles and invitations to community events, but Karen had rebuffed every gesture with criticism. The community garden was unsightly and attracted pests. The children ' s laughter from the playground was excessive noise pollution. The weekly farmers market was creating traffic problems and lowering property values. But this was different. This was her first direct assault on what the community held dear, and the crowd was beginning to realize it. This is ridiculous, shouted Misses Chen from the sidewalk, her voice carrying over the murmur of the crowd. Emma has every right to be in this parade. Other voices joined in, a crescendo of support building as more people understood what was happening. Officer Jenkins raised his hand for quiet, his face flushed with embarrassment. I understand your concerns, folks, but I have to follow up on legitimate safety complaints. The caller reported that the wheelchair setup poses a risk to other participants and spectators. Tom Martinez stepped forward, his jaw set with determination. Officer, with all due respect, this float was inspected and approved by the city three weeks ago. We have all the documentation right here. He pulled a folder from his jacket pocket, his hands shaking slightly with suppressed anger. Every safety protocol has been followed to the letter. Emma, meanwhile, remained silent in her wheelchair, her dark eyes moving from face to face as she tried to understand why everyone seemed so upset. She ' d been practicing her parade wave for weeks, and now the adults were arguing instead of celebrating. A single tear rolled down her cheek, but she wiped it away quickly, not wanting to add to the tension. The crowd ' s murmur grew louder, more agitated. Parents began pushing closer to the barricades, their voices mixing into an angry chorus. Leave her alone. She belongs here. This is her day. The festival atmosphere had transformed into something darker, more volatile. Officer Jenkins spoke into his radio, requesting backup as the situation escalated. His partner, Officer Rodriguez, emerged from the second patrol car and approached the growing crowd with his hands raised in a calming gesture. Everyone please step back and give us some space to sort this out. But the crowd was having none of it. Mister Peterson, who owned the hardware store on Main Street, stepped forward with his arms crossed. You want to know what ' s really unsafe? Traumatizing a seven- year- old girl in front of the entire community because one person made a bogus complaint. The marching band students began to whisper among themselves, their instruments forgotten as they watched the drama unfold. Sarah Williams, the high school drum major, stepped down from her platform and approached the edge of the float. Officer, Emma is our friend. She comes to all our games and cheers us on. We are not going anywhere without her. Her declaration was met with a cheer from the crowd, and suddenly the other children on the float began to stand up, linking arms in a show of solidarity. The paper dragons and rainbow streamers fluttered in the breeze as the young parade participants staged an impromptu protest. Officer Jenkins looked around desperately, caught between his duty to respond to the complaint and the obvious injustice of the situation. Look, I am just trying to do my job here. If everyone would just calm down, we can figure this out. But calm was the last thing on anyone ' s mind. The crowd pressed closer, their voices rising in a cacophony of protest. Parents pointed accusingly at the police cars, their faces flushed with indignation. The parade had been a beloved tradition for twenty- three years, and no one could remember anything like this happening before. From her position behind the crowd, Karen watched the scene with growing unease. This wasn ' t going according to plan. She ' d expected the police to quietly remove the girl and the parade to continue without incident. Instead, she ' d created a public spectacle that was rapidly spiraling out of control. She pulled out her phone again and dialed nine one one a second time. This is Karen Hendricks again. The situation has escalated, and there is now a crowd of people becoming increasingly agitated. I think you need to send more officers to control this dangerous situation. The dispatcher ' s voice was noticeably cooler this time. Ma ' am, we have officers on scene. They ' re handling the situation appropriately. Is there an actual emergency or threat of violence? Karen ' s voice rose an octave. There is a mob of people surrounding the police. This is exactly the kind of situation that could turn violent at any moment. The city needs to take control before someone gets seriously hurt. But even as she spoke, Karen could see that the crowd, while vocal, was peaceful. Parents held their children ' s hands, grandparents leaned on walking sticks, and teenagers clustered together with their phones out, recording everything. This was a community standing up for one of their own, not a violent mob. The sound of another vehicle approaching caused everyone to turn toward the street. A black sedan pulled up behind the police cars, and Councilwoman Patricia Valdez emerged with purpose in every step. Her silver hair was pulled back in a practical bun, and her expression was thunderous as she took in the scene. Patricia had been at the city hall when the call came in about the parade disturbance. She ' d immediately driven over, her heart sinking as she realized what must have happened. As the councilwoman who had championed Emma ' s selection as grand marshal, she felt personally responsible for the girl ' s welfare. Officer Jenkins, she called out, her voice carrying the authority of her position. What exactly is the nature of this emergency? The officer visibly relaxed at the sight of a familiar face. Councilwoman Valdez, we received a complaint about a safety hazard involving the wheelchair on the float. The caller insisted it posed a danger to other participants. Patricia ' s eyes narrowed as she scanned the crowd, looking for the source of the complaint. Her gaze settled on Karen, who was trying to blend into the background near the coffee shop, and who exactly filed this complaint. Before Officer Jenkins could answer, Karen stepped forward with her chin raised defiantly. I did, and I stand by it. That child has no business being on a moving float where she could fall and hurt herself or others. It ' s a clear liability issue that the city is irresponsibly ignoring. The crowd turned to stare at Karen, their expressions ranging from disbelief to outright hostility. Patricia studied the woman for a long moment, her experienced politician ' s eye taking in every detail from the expensive handbag to the perfectly applied makeup. Ms. Hendrix, is it? Patricia ' s voice was deceptively calm. I am curious about your sudden concern for Emma ' s safety. Were you present during the safety inspection three weeks ago? Did you volunteer to help with the parade preparations? Have you ever met Emma or her family before today? Karen ' s face flushed pink beneath her foundation. I don ' t need to know her personally to recognize a dangerous situation when I see one. Someone has to think about the bigger picture here, about the legal ramifications if something goes wrong. The bigger picture, Patricia repeated slowly, stepping closer to Karen. You mean the picture where a seven- year- old girl who has worked tirelessly to make her community more inclusive is humiliated and excluded from a celebration in her honor? The crowd murmured its agreement, sensing that the tide was turning. Emma, who had been watching the adults argue with growing confusion, suddenly spoke up in a small but clear voice. Why doesn ' t that lady want me in the parade? Did I do something wrong? The question hung in the air like a physical weight, and for a moment, everyone was silent. Even Karen seemed momentarily taken aback by the child ' s innocent directness. It was Mister Thompson, the band director, who broke the silence. Emma, sweetheart, you didn ' t do anything wrong. You ' re exactly where you belong. He turned to face the crowd, his voice growing stronger. This young lady raised over three thousand dollars for the accessible playground. She organized bake sales, car washes, and awareness campaigns. She has done more for this community than most adults. The crowd erupted in applause, and several people began chanting Emma ' s name. The little girl ' s face lit up with a smile that could have powered the entire street, and she waved tentatively at her supporters. Patricia seized the moment. Officer Jenkins, I am formally requesting that you ignore this complaint. The parade has been properly permitted and inspected. Emma Martinez is officially designated as grand marshal by unanimous vote of the city council. Any attempt to remove her would be a violation of her civil rights. But Karen wasn ' t finished. She stepped forward again, her voice rising above the crowd noise. This is exactly the kind of special treatment that ' s ruining our communities. Just because someone is disabled doesn ' t mean they get to break the rules and put everyone else at risk. There are appropriate venues for people like her, and a public parade isn ' t one of them. The words hit the crowd like a physical blow. The cheering stopped abruptly, replaced by shocked gasps and angry murmurs. Karen had crossed a line from which there was no return, and everyone knew it. Maria Martinez, who had been quietly comforting her daughter, suddenly stood up to her full height. Her voice, when she spoke, was steady and clear despite the tears in her eyes. People like her. You mean people like my daughter, who volunteers at the animal shelter every Saturday. People like Emma, who makes cards for the elderly residents at Sunset Manor. People like my little girl, who has never met a stranger and believes everyone deserves kindness. The crowd was completely silent now, hanging on every word. Maria continued, her voice growing stronger with each sentence. You want to know what ' s really dangerous? Ms. Hendrix. It ' s teaching our children that some people are worth less than others. It ' s showing them that differences should be feared instead of celebrated. It ' s poisoning their hearts with the same hatred that ' s clearly eating away at yours. Karen opened her mouth to respond, but Patricia held up a hand. Ms. Hendrix, I think you ' ve said quite enough. Officer Jenkins, please clear the street so the parade can continue. There is no safety hazard here, except the one created by this unnecessary disruption. But Karen wasn ' t ready to concede defeat. She pulled out her phone again, this time dialing a different number. Yes, I ' d like to speak to the mayor ' s office. This is Karen Hendricks, and I am witnessing a serious abuse of power by city officials. They ' re allowing a dangerous situation to continue and refusing to listen to legitimate safety concerns. The crowd watched in fascination as Karen paced back and forth, her voice growing more shrill with each word. She was clearly used to getting her way through complaints and escalation, but this audience was different. These people knew Emma, loved her, and weren ' t about to be intimidated by threats or bureaucratic maneuvering. Patricia pulled out her own phone and made a quick call. Hello, this is Councilwoman Valdez. I need to convene an emergency session of the city council for tomorrow morning. We have a situation that requires immediate attention. She paused, listening to the response. Yes, I understand it ' s Saturday, but this can ' t wait until Monday. As the two women made their respective calls, the crowd began to organize itself. Parents formed a protective circle around Emma ' s float, while teenagers used their phones to document everything. The marching band, taking their cue from the adults, began playing a soft, uplifting melody that seemed to calm the tension in the air. Emma, sensing that something important was happening, straightened her paper crown and gripped her parade sign more tightly. She might not understand all the adult words and politics, but she understood that people were fighting for her, standing up for her right to be included. The thought filled her with a warmth that had nothing to do with the October sunshine. Officer Jenkins, meanwhile, was having his own quiet conversation with dispatch. After several minutes, he approached Patricia with a relieved expression. Councilwoman, I have been instructed to allow the parade to continue. The complaint has been reviewed and found to be without merit. The crowd erupted in cheers, but Patricia held up her hand for attention. Before we continue, I want everyone to remember this moment. Remember what happened here today, and remember why it matters. Emma Martinez isn ' t just our grand marshal because she ' s brave or inspiring, though she ' s certainly both of those things. She ' s our grand marshal because she represents the best of what our community can be when we choose inclusion over exclusion, love over fear. She turned to look directly at Karen, who was still clutching her phone but had stopped talking. And to anyone who thinks they can bully or intimidate members of our community, let me be clear, you will not succeed. We stand together and we protect each other. That ' s what makes us strong. The crowd ' s response was deafening. People clapped, cheered, and whistled as the police cars moved aside and the parade route cleared. But Karen wasn ' t finished. She pushed through the crowd, her face red with anger and frustration. This isn ' t over, she shouted, pointing at Patricia. I ' ll be filing complaints with the state, the county, anyone who will listen. This kind of reckless endangerment won ' t be tolerated, and I ' ll make sure everyone knows exactly what kind of people are running this city. Patricia ' s response was calm but firm. Ms. Hendrix, you ' re welcome to file any complaints you feel are necessary, but I ' d suggest you think carefully about your next steps. Tomorrow morning ' s emergency council session will address this situation, and I have a feeling the community will have quite a lot to say about what happened here today. The threat in Patricia ' s voice was unmistakable, and Karen seemed to realize for the first time that she might have overplayed her hand. She looked around at the crowd, seeing nothing but hostile faces and crossed arms. Even the children were glaring at her with the kind of judgment that only the young can deliver. As the parade finally began to move again, Emma waved enthusiastically at the crowd, her earlier tears forgotten in the excitement of the moment. The children ' s float rolled slowly down Main Street, followed by the marching band playing a triumphant version of This Land is Your Land. But the real victory was in the faces of the spectators. Parents pointed Emma out to their children, explaining what had happened and why it mattered. Grandparents wiped away tears of pride and relief. Teenagers recorded videos with captions about standing up for what ' s right. The community had been tested, and it had passed with flying colors. Karen, meanwhile, found herself increasingly isolated as the crowd dispersed to follow the parade. People actively avoided making eye contact with her, and she could hear whispered conversations that clearly involved her name. The social ostracism was immediate and complete. She made one last desperate attempt to salvage the situation, approaching a group of parents with young children. Look, I hope you understand that I was just trying to keep everyone safe. Sometimes you have to make hard decisions for the greater good. But the parents simply walked away, pulling their children with them. One father paused just long enough to say, Lady, the only thing unsafe here today was your attitude. Emma Martinez is a hero, and you ' re just someone who tried to hurt a child. That ' s all anyone ' s going to remember. The next morning, Patricia called the emergency council session to order in a packed chamber. Word of the parade incident had spread through social media overnight, and people had driven from neighboring towns to attend the meeting. The room buzzed with tension as Patricia gavelled for order. We are here to address yesterday ' s incident during the annual children ' s parade, she began, her voice carrying clearly through the microphone. I ' ve reviewed the complaint filed by Ms. Karen Hendricks, and I ' ve spoken with multiple witnesses about what transpired. Karen sat in the front row, flanked by an expensive looking lawyer she ' d hired overnight. She ' d spent the evening researching disability law and civil rights statutes, convinced she could find some technicality to justify her actions. But as she looked around the packed chamber, she began to realize the depth of her miscalculation. The council heard testimony from dozens of community members. Parents described Emma ' s positive impact on their children. Teachers talked about her volunteer work and fundraising efforts. Even the mayor, who had initially planned to avoid the controversial meeting, spoke about the importance of inclusion and community values. But it was Emma herself who provided the most powerful testimony. Maria wheeled her daughter to the front of the chamber, and Emma spoke clearly into the microphone without any notes or preparation. I just want to say that I am sorry if I scared that lady, Emma said, her voice small but steady. I didn ' t mean to make anyone upset. I just wanted to be in the parade with my friends and show everyone my sign about the playground. I worked really hard to help raise money so all the kids could play together, even the ones who use wheelchairs like me. She paused, looking around the room with wide eyes. I don ' t understand why being different is scary. My mom says everyone is different in some way, and that ' s what makes the world interesting. I hope the lady learns that too, so she won ' t be scared anymore. The chamber erupted in applause, and several people wiped away tears. Even some of the council members looked emotional as they listened to the seven- year- old ' s words of forgiveness and hope. When it came time for Karen to speak, she stood slowly and approached the microphone. Her lawyer had advised her to apologize and try to minimize the damage, but Karen ' s pride wouldn ' t allow it. Instead, she doubled down on her position. I stand by my actions yesterday, she said, her voice echoing through the suddenly quiet chamber. I saw a potential safety hazard and reported it to the appropriate authorities. The fact that this community has chosen to prioritize political correctness over legitimate safety concerns is deeply troubling. She continued, oblivious to the growing hostility in the room. I ' ve lived in better communities than this, places where people understand that sometimes difficult decisions have to be made for the greater good. If that makes me unpopular, so be it. At least I had the courage to speak up when no one else would. The reaction was immediate and overwhelming. The chamber erupted in angry shouts and boos. People stood up, pointing accusingly at Karen and demanding that she leave town. Patricia had to gavel repeatedly for order, and it took several minutes before the room quieted enough for the meeting to continue. When order was finally restored, Patricia delivered the council ' s verdict. After careful consideration of yesterday ' s events and today ' s testimony, this council finds that Ms. Hendrix ' s complaint was not only without merit but represented a clear attempt to discriminate against a disabled child. Her actions caused unnecessary trauma to Emma Martinez and disrupted a community celebration. She paused, looking directly at Karen. Therefore, the city council formally censures Ms. Karen Hendricks for her actions. Additionally, we are implementing new inclusion policies for all city events to ensure that what happened yesterday never happens again. The crowd erupted in cheers, but Patricia wasn ' t finished. Furthermore, we are establishing the Emma Martinez Inclusion Fund to support accessibility improvements throughout our community. Emma ' s courage and grace in the face of adversity have inspired us all, and we want to ensure her legacy continues to benefit future generations. As the meeting concluded, Karen found herself completely alone. Even her lawyer had quietly distanced himself, recognizing that the case was unwinnable and the client had become toxic. She gathered her things and walked out of the chamber to a chorus of boos and cat calls. Outside, a group of reporters waited to interview her about the incident. Karen saw this as her chance to control the narrative, to explain her side of the story to a wider audience, but her comments only made things worse. This community has lost its way, she told the cameras. They ' ve chosen to prioritize the feelings of one family over the safety and well- being of everyone else. I tried to do the right thing, and they ' ve made me into a villain for it. I tried to do the right thing, and they ' ve made me into a villain for it. The interviews would later be broadcast on local news stations, but instead of generating sympathy for Karen, they only reinforced the public ' s perception of her as a heartless bully. Social media exploded with criticism, and Doncher Stand With Emma began trending nationally. Within days, Karen found herself facing consequences she hadn ' t anticipated. Her employer, a regional insurance company, terminated her contract after clients began complaining about her association with the firm. Her homeowners association received dozens of complaints about her conduct, and several neighbors started a petition to have her removed from the community. But the most serious consequences came from the state level. The attorney general ' s office, responding to public pressure, opened an investigation into Karen ' s nine one one calls. Filing false reports to emergency services is a serious crime, and Karen ' s recorded statements were clearly inconsistent with the actual facts of the situation. The investigation revealed that Karen had a history of frivolous complaints and harassment in her previous community. She had been involved in similar incidents targeting minority families, elderly residents, and anyone else she deemed undesirable. The pattern of behavior was clear, and the charges were filed within a week. Meanwhile, Emma ' s story continued to spread. National news outlets picked up the story, and donations poured in from around the country for the Emma Martinez Inclusion Fund. The little girl appeared on morning talk shows, where her infectious smile and positive attitude won over audiences across America. The contrast between Emma ' s grace and Karen ' s bitterness couldn ' t have been more stark. While Emma used her newfound fame to advocate for inclusion and understanding, Karen retreated into isolation and resentment. She sold her house at a loss and moved to another state, but the internet never forgets, and her reputation followed her wherever she went. A year later, Emma was invited to be the grand marshal of the state ' s largest parade. She accepted graciously, but insisted that her float carry a message of forgiveness and understanding. Even the scared lady, she said when asked about Karen, everyone deserves a second chance if they ' re willing to learn. The Willowbrook community, meanwhile, had been transformed by the experience. The inclusion policies sparked by Emma ' s ordeal became a model for other cities. The accessible playground was expanded into a full recreational complex, and the annual parade grew into a celebration of diversity and acceptance that attracted visitors from across the region. Patricia Valdez, reflecting on the incident during the next year ' s parade, realized that Karen had inadvertently done the community a service. Her attack on Emma had forced everyone to examine their values and recommit to their principles. The community was stronger, more united, and more inclusive than it had ever been. As Emma waved from her float that second year, surrounded by children of all abilities and backgrounds, she embodied the spirit of resilience and hope that had defined her community ' s response to hatred. The parade that had once been interrupted by fear now celebrated the triumph of love over prejudice, inclusion over exclusion. The crowd that lined the streets was bigger than ever, and their cheers were louder than ever. But the real victory wasn ' t in the numbers or the noise. It was in the faces of the children who saw Emma not as someone to be pitied or feared, but as a leader and a friend. It was in the parents who taught their children that differences should be celebrated, not hidden. It was in the community that had chosen to stand up for what was right, even when it was difficult. And somewhere in another state, Karen Hendricks watched the news coverage of the parade with a mixture of regret and stubbornness. She had lost everything her job, her home, her reputation, her freedom, but she still couldn ' t bring herself to admit that she had been wrong. The bitterness that had driven her actions continued to consume her, a cautionary tale of what happens when fear and hatred take root in the human heart. But that was her burden to bear. In Willowbrook, the parade continued. The children laughed, and Emma Martinez smiled her radiant smile as she waved to the crowd. The community had faced its test and emerged stronger, more compassionate, and more unified than ever before. And that, perhaps, was the greatest victory of all.